On Monday, August the 20th, 2018, want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Justin Keer, is that correct? International Gospel Outreach Church at 1101 Windy Hill, who will come forth this time, give us our invocation and also lead us in the place of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Heavenly Father, we do thank you for the opportunity that we have to gather here tonight for this wonderful city of Smyrna. The men and women that are here in this room tonight, Father, we pray that you fill them with wisdom and discernment as they engage in discussion and conversations tonight and lead this meeting as you will. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that are new in town or looking to change, I'm sure the folks at International Gospel Outreach, which is located right at the intersection of Windy Hill and Atlanta Road, right under the underpass, are good folks. Agenda changes, we do not have any, other than item A, we will table that issue under land issues, zonings, and annexations. Under the mayoral report, we have a proclamation in recognition of Smyrna Little League Eleven and Under All-Stars 2018 Regional Champs. I'll ask Mr. Ron Fennel, I know we've got a bunch of guys here, and parents, and coaches, and folks that were really involved with these kids. So, Ron, you want to...
I do, and I want to recognize these young men properly. So when I call your name, if you'll come and stand in front facing the audience, I'd love to recognize you individually as we read you out. And then we're going to get a group photograph, and one of those coaches is going to speak on behalf of the group unless you guys elect one of your own. All right. It's my honor to recognize tonight the city of Smyrna. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Smyrna Little League Eleven and Under All-Stars, whereas the members of the Smyrna Little League Eleven and Under All-Stars enthusiastically participated in the 2018 baseball season, and whereas the Smyrna Little League Eleven and Under All-Stars traveled to Greenville, North Carolina to participate in the Tournament of State Champions and defeated the North Carolina team 15 to 4 on August 1st, 2018, to become regional champs. Whereas it is fitting to celebrate and focus attention upon the Smyrna Little League Eleven and Under All-Stars and recognize their success. Whereas we commend and congratulate the Smyrna Little League Eleven and Under All-Stars. Here's where I read your name, if you could come up and just line up as we read you up. Nicholas Denopoli.
Bryce Dozier. Robert Hicks. Joel James. Alex Johns. Braden Lightsey. Connor Mason. Jordan Miller. Jackman Ramon. Peyton Robidoux. Deacon Smith. Kyle Wright. And our honorary All-Star member of the team, Ryan Alakon. And here are the coaches that helped guide the team. Eric Hamansky. Jason Wright. Gabor Dozier. And Eric Johns. This is the team that were successful in winning the 2018 state championship. Therefore, IA Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, hereby proclaim August 20th, 2018, to be Smyrna Little League Eleven and Under All-Star Day, and I urge the citizens of Smyrna to recognize and congratulate the All-Star team members and their coaches in witness whereof. I have hereunto signed my hand, caused the hand, caused my hand and caused the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed on the 20th day of August. A-Max Bacon, Junior Mayor. Let's welcome and congratulate the highest achieving team in Smyrna Little League history.
So, on behalf of this amazing group of kids and coaches and parents and grandparents and brothers and sisters, we'd like to first thank the mayor for having us out tonight, Mr. Fennel for setting this up for us, we appreciate that, and the rest of the council. We really, really appreciate everything you've done for our city, for our boys, for our Smyrna Little League. We went down there with a true passion to not only show how well we played baseball, but also, more importantly, to represent the city and to have pride in that jersey that was across our chest, and you would have been super proud of the way that these boys represented themselves, their families, and our city. So thank you very much for this awesome honor, and we will make sure to kind of carry it along with us through our years through Smyrna. So thank you.
So let me ask this, so these 11-year-olds, will they compete next year as the same group that the 12-year-olds almost made it, didn't they, too?
Yeah, so the 12-year-olds, they represented the city really well as well. They unfortunately didn't make it as far as our boys. But next year, hopefully, all of these boys will play rec ball again, and then the process is, is through rec baseball, they'll have an opportunity to go through the All-Star process, and as 12-year-olds, if they make that All-Star team, then we plan on going to Williamsport next year and missing a whole bunch of school.
There you go.
Y'all very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. These kids are winners, let's thank them. Congratulations. I'll get a copy of the resolution for all the kids to make sure, and we'll communicate with you, Eric, make sure, or DeBarre will get that to you. Thank you again, this is a high achieving team. Keep up the good work, man. Thank you for representing the city of Smyrna.
Ron, you sound like you should be at SunTrust announcing, getting folks fired up, so. And to the parents and the family, I know y'all are proud, and I think I see most folks right there, congratulations and thanks so much. Item B is the mayor's assignment of council committees, I've already handed those out tonight, really nothing to bring up. Item four, land issues, zonings, and annexation. A 2018-270, it's a public hearing zoning requests. Z 18-01, modifications of approved site plan and building elevations, 61.88 acres, land lots 61, 171, 172, 174, 175, 176, 289, Riverview Landing on Riverview Road between Nichols Drive and Dickerson Drive. Ardent Companies, this will be tabled until September the 17th, 2018. I will ask that Mr. Fennel take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We understand there's still some work to be done on the application for whatever modifications and changes to partnerships that might occur. So at the request of the applicant, I have moved that we table item 2018-270, public hearing zoning requests, Z 18-011, modification of approved site plan and building elevations on 61.88 acres, land lots 61, 171, 172, 174, 175, 176, 289, Riverview Landing on Riverview Road between Nichols Drive and Dickerson Drive from Ardent Companies. Move to table.
Motion second to table, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0, it's the first time we've had seven folks voting in almost nine months, so. Item B, 2018-299, public hearings zoning requests, Z 18-012, approval of a special land use permit for a modular classroom building, 8.83 acres, land lot 595, 596, and 597 at 3130 Atlanta Road Covenant Christian School. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. Covenant Christian School is seeking a renewal of their special land use permit for use of a modular classroom building. The modular building will allow Covenant Christian School to provide additional classroom space while the school constructs a permanent school building on-site. The building will be located along Collier Drive next to existing buildings. The current special land use permit was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the July 9th, 2018 meeting, and was recommended for approval by a vote of 7 to 0. Community Development recommends approval of the requested modular building with one condition. Rusty Martin, our senior planner, is here to provide more comments.
Okay, and this is in Mr. Tim Goos' district, before I turn it over to him, is the applicant here? Okay. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this special land use permit? Okay, let the record show there is none. Mr. Goos, I'm sure you'll want to turn it over to Mr. Martin.
Rusty, please fill us in, please.
Good evening. As Ms. Sadler-Jones summarized the request for you, the Planning and Zoning Board in July voted to, or made a recommendation of approval by a vote of 7-0. Covenant Christian School is seeking to renew an existing special land use permit for their modular classroom building. It's approximately 3,800 square feet in size, it has four classroom units in it, it's 56 feet by 68 feet in size, and it's located along the Collier Drive road frontage. This is the subject property, just to give you guys some orientation as to what's going on. If you guys remember, in 2008 Covenant Christian School made the initial application for the special land use permit and for the modular building. As part of that zoning, or that approval, mayor and council tied the permit to a 24-month period in length, so after 24 months, they had to come back and reapply. So they came back in 2010, 2012, 2014, and 2016. This is the location of the modular building, as it sits today out there. And then this is a picture of the site and the building. Community Development is reviewed to request, we recommend approval of the requested modular building and renewal of the special land use permit with the same condition that we've carried forth for the past five requests. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Rusty? The same report you gave two years ago.
Five years ago, or 10 years ago, every two years.
Yeah, two, yeah, yeah. That's good, all right, thank you, Rusty. If the applicants will step forward and tell us who you are and...
Evening. My name is Max Thieland, I'm the president of the Board of Trustees for Covenant Christian School, and with me I have Dr. Barber, who is our headmaster. We thank you for your consideration of this application, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Question for you. Purpose of the building, I guess, what's the function, what do you do with the...
Right now, we have four classrooms in the building, we continue to operate the teaching children out of those classrooms, and that is our plan for the foreseeable future until we can raise enough money to build the permanent building.
I know fundraising takes time and a lot of hard work.
Yes, sir.
How's that going for you?
It's going slowly, we're kind of in a rebuilding phase right now, but we are optimistically looking toward the future, and we think it's going to be successful eventually.
How many students are you charged with these days?
As of today, our enrollment is 160 students.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? So in two years, you think I'll be back?
At this point, it looks like we will be back in two years.
I've been down there before, you can't really tell, that it's a modular building, they got great teachers and students, and they're also good neighbors to us, they're right next door to Lebronner Hall, and I think fundraising's been tough for everybody, so I think we're okay with it for this year. Anybody got any other questions, of anyone? Okay, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve 2018-299 zoning request, Z 18-012, approval of special land use permit for a modular classroom building on 8.83 acres, sitting on land lot 595, 596, and 597 at 3130 Atlanta Road Covenant Christian School.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Tim, that was your first one, you do good. Item five, previous licenses, we have none. Item six is formal business, A 2018-361, award RFP number 19-001. Smyrna History Museum renovation project to the second lowest bidder, building for fabrications at 3555 Broad Street, Champlin, Georgia, 30341, for $185,000, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The city requested proposals from qualified firms to provide professional exhibit design, fabrication, and installation services for the redesign of the interpretive exhibits at the Smyrna History Museum. Thirty-five firms requested the RFP and four submitted proposals. The proposals were reviewed and scored by a seven-member staff committee. It is the recommendation of the purchasing manager and the museum manager that the museum renovations, RFP, be awarded to building for fabrication in the amount of $185,000, and this money will be funded through the fiscal year operating budget. Building for fabrication is the second lowest bidder, the project is expected to be completed in seven months.
Mr. Welch, who chairs that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know of anyone else to call on to give any better explanation of it, but I want to give a little background on this particular project. We approached the operators of the museum about three to four years ago, realizing that at some point, they were losing their volunteers for service, and that Mr. Harold Smith, who was operating the museum, was getting older, and at some point, he would need to turn it over to the city. We worked out an agreement with that group and have begun the process of arranging items within the museum that we feel like will be used for the future exhibits. This is a project that I feel like personally is something that we as citizens of Smyrna, we can use and hopefully bring in some classrooms and some children from the elementary schools and middle schools to come in and see the museum and be proud of what they have to look at. We as citizens should be proud of the museum. Mr. Smith did a great job for many years, but I look forward to the new museum being there. Essentially, we'll have seven stations within the museum based on a timeframe that the museum curator has set up, and look forward to having the project finished. With that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item 6A, 2018-361, awarding RFP number 19-001, Smyrna History Museum renovation project to the second lowest bidder, building for fabrication at 3555 Broad Street, Champlin, Georgia, for $185,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the related documents.
Have a motion in a second, is any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a note that this is a seminal moment. I'm not a big fan of purposing things to look backwards exclusively, but it is important to note a moment, a seminal moment in history every so often, and I want to commend Harold Smith, our former mayor, for his longstanding service on behalf of the citizens of Smyrna to try to continue to keep the narrative about our history alive. He collected a lot of artifacts, probably more than will ever be used or seen by others, but the fact that he still is walking history, and he preserved an awful lot, I say thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to get to this point, I think we're the city, husbands are responsibility appropriately on recognizing the different chapters of Smyrna history. I wanted to just make note of that. I think Harold did say that Sherman was wearing a blue shirt when he rode through town, so he's seen an awful lot of history here, but this is our opportunity to make the citizens aware of all aspects and all chapters of Smyrna history via an exhibit.
Harold may very well be around for the next renovation of this museum.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 5 to 2 with Ms. Bluestein and Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item 6B, 2018-357, award RFP 19-003, City of Smyrna Community Center roof replacement to Ben Hill Roofing and Siding Company, Inc., 6811 Bankhead Highway, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134, for the amount of $1,077,812, and to authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The city requested proposals for a complete roof replacement at the Smyrna Community Center. Three proposals were received, and one proposal was received late and was not opened. Ben Hill Roofing and Siding Company Incorporated is the only supplier that submitted required documentation and met all criteria within the proposal documents. Staff specifically requested a detailed project schedule and safety plan, along with references confirming installation of roof with similar scope, size, and magnitude. The most responsive and responsible bidder is Ben Hill Roofing and Siding Incorporated. It is the recommendation of the purchasing manager and Public Works that the city award the community center roof replacement, RFP, to Ben Hill Roofing and Siding in the amount of $1,077,812, with funding out of the previous year's surplus. This project is expected to be completed in 120 days.
This is under Mr. Welch's committee, Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quick background on this, it's 27 years old, we hope to get a few more years out of it, but did not work that way. But, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to award item 2018-357, award RFP 19-003, City of Smyrna Community Center roof replacement to Ben Hill Roofing and Siding Company of 6811 Bankhead Highway, Douglasville, Georgia, in the amount of $1,077,812, and to authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Second.
Motion second to award this to Ben Hill Roofing. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item C, 6C, is 2018-355, approval to purchase six equipped Ford Explorers and two administrative-equipped Ford Explorers as part of the FY19 Vehicle Replacement Fund at a total cost of $322,993.90. Vehicle will be purchased through the state contract at Wade Ford at 3860 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, 30082. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The police department budgeted to purchase six Ford Explorer Pursuit utility vehicles and two Ford Explorer Admin vehicles. The vehicles would be purchased using Georgia State contract from Wade Ford, while other needed equipment will come from Diversified Electronics, which is a Cobb County contract that we will piggyback off of, an in-site, public-sector, U.S. Communities Cooperative contract. Reflective graphic kits will be purchased from Graphic Shop, which is a sole-source vendor. It is a recommendation of the purchasing manager and the police department that these eight vehicles in total be purchased from Wade Ford with funding from the fiscal year 19 Vehicle Replacement Fund in the amount of $322,993.90.
Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Sadler-Jones said, this is, these are budgeted vehicle replacement for the police department, so if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve item 6C, 2018-355, approval to purchase six equipped Ford Explorers and two administrative-equipped Ford Explorers as part of the fiscal year 19 Vehicle Replacement Fund at a total cost of $322,993.90. This vehicle purchase will be through state contract, Wade Ford, 3860 South Cobb Drive, Southeast, Smyrna, Georgia, 30082.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item seven is commercial building permits, we have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the August 6, 2018, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the August 2, 2018, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the August 6, 2018, pre-council meeting minutes. Item D, approval to revise personnel policy, EMP 6-01, shift differential pay, and authorize the mayor to execute related document. And item E, approval of the 2019 Smyrna community event dates.
Here, motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion in a second, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. Committee reports will start tonight, Mr. Derek Norton.
No report, Your Honor, thank you.
Ms. Bluestein.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to, this is a reminder for high school students to apply for the Smyrna Youth Council. The Smyrna Youth Council is an opportunity for local high school students to engage in a local government leadership opportunity and represent youth in the community. Beginning in October, selected members will meet twice monthly throughout the school year to discuss youth priorities, work on projects, and learn about their local government. Applications are open until the September 12, 2018, at 5:00. Visit the website for more information and a link to the application. Thank you. That's all, Your Honor.
Ms. Blackburn.
Yes, once again, I want to congratulate our Smyrna Little League Eleven and Under team for doing an exceptional job, I'm really proud of them, and having had the opportunity to watch a few of the games. And then also want to just say congratulations to the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation for an incredible gala that they had on Saturday evening, and I believe that they raised a little over $20,000. And with that, I yield.
It's Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just need to remind everyone that on September the 8th, we're having a shred fest at 9:00 a.m. at the Eileen Wolf Center, where citizens can bring up to five boxes, and this is sponsored by the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Group. Secondly, also by Keep Smyrna Beautiful, there's a grand reopening of the Smyrna Century Garden on October the 6th, 10:00 to 11:00. The garden's been restored by the Smyrna John Quill Garden Club. Any of you that are interested in coming out, show up. Any of you that are interested in coming out, show up on site that morning. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have something to announce from Mary Moore, the director of the Smyrna Library. The library has started a new collection of early literacy materials for parents with babies and toddlers. The collection is called "Let's Talk About It," and it includes 10 different kits. Each kit focuses on a theme such as shapes or colors and has four board books on the topic, as well as an age-appropriate toy or activity. Early literacy skills are dependent on babies hearing millions and millions of words. Smyrna Library wants to encourage parents to talk to their babies, and reading books to children is a great way to expose children to words and concepts. These kits are shelved in the youth services area of the library. If all the kits are checked out, ask a staff member to help you place a kit on hold. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Tim Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I continue to have the opportunity to meet some of the great staff, and last week, met with the director of Keeps Smyrna Beautiful, and then had a nice informative tour of the fire department from Chief Akri and Deputy Chief Marcus. And Chief pointed out several times that we have the number-one fire department in the state. And he packed that up with all sorts of stats. But one thing, so it was very informative and I appreciate their time. But Keeps Smyrna Beautiful is offering a $1,000 grant to all of our public schools, and all they need to do is really fill out the grant form. So, I'm sure that's a pretty easy process if they're willing to do it, but there's a $1,000 grants that are available and throughout the school year. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add my congratulations earlier offered for the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation on a successful event, raising money to help support the programs of the public safety community, helping our young people in the community, and helping with education throughout the city. I want to also congratulate Brian Marcos on his recent successful election to a statewide post within the fire service. I want to note that the last few days, we've had coyote sightings in the area, and I know that some of our pets are at risk, so I ask you to, urge you to share with your constituents caution. Just recognize that that is an enforcement component by the State Department of Natural Resources. For the others, for pet-related activity, our Cobb County Animal Services, and we met with them last Thursday night, provides ready information and support services. And if you need more information, any of the members of council or the staff can share with you how you can get in touch with the appropriate person if you have a challenge with coyotes or unruly pets that might be causing problems. I just saw a news episode about one of my constituents down in Ward 7, down on the Riverline Park area, concerned about the coyotes. So, just be aware that we are encroaching on their original territory, and so when they get hungry, they come looking for food. One last thing, it's about to be playoff time for the Atlanta Braves. Now, notwithstanding the last four games they played with the Colorado Rockies, they're still at the top of the Eastern Division, so let's root on our hometown folks. We're going to win the World Series right here in Smyrna, Georgia, very soon. Let's hope it's starting this year. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones, do you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to remind the public that city offices will be closed on Monday, September 3rd, in observance of Labor Day. Thank you.
Mr. Cochran. Ms. Graham. Nothing. The next item on the agenda is show cause hearings. We do not have anything tonight. Citizens input, no one signed up. So, if there's no other business brought for this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:33.